North Liberty City Council to order today's December 13th, our one and only meeting in December to wrap up this year. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Bermal.
Here.
Harrington. Siddig.
Not sure.
Here.
There we go.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes to what's on there. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Second.
And moved in second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda carries. Item four then is our consent agenda. Just a few things on there. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off and talk about separately? Seeing none, could I have a motion for approval?
I move.
Second.
And moved in second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Alright. Item five is time for our public comment. If there's something that's not already on the agenda that we'll have public comment on, now's the time to let us know as a council. Making your way up? Nope. Okay. I don't see anybody here for public comment, so I'll close the public comment period. Come on up to the podium, young man. Can you just let us know who you are and where you live?
I hope this is the right time and place for me. I'm Dr. Robert Todd, 825 Prairie Street, right over on Centennial Park. And I would like to make some comments on the proposed fire station location.
We're actually gonna talk about that in just a bit, so...
This is not... okay.
Nope. We have plenty of time for you, coming up here in just a few minutes. Sounds good. Any other public comment? Okay. Item six. Kevin, our engineer's report, please.
Yeah, I don't have much for you tonight. I just have an update on one project, the heritage drainage project. We finally got our clearance from the DNR and the Corps of Engineers, and we sent those plans out to some contractors for quotations. Those are due December 21st. So we're hoping we get a good bid. The... that's intended for winter work. And we put a deadline at the end of April so that they can do some seeding for any disturbed areas in the spring. And the estimate on that one is $60,000. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Ryan?
Okay, just a couple of things on my end. First, I just wanted to call your attention to a couple of the updated resolutions or agreements we sent out. We also updated them in our online packet, but it was the transfer resolution and then the West Penn Agreement with the county. Both of those documents were emailed and then also, as I mentioned, included in the... or updated online. So in case you were using an earlier packet that you may have downloaded, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And then the last thing I'd mention is after 23 years, we have... our head custodian is retiring this week, actually. Dale Leonard has been with the community center for those 23 years as the head custodian. And so he's decided that it's time to step away. So we're happy for him. We're actually gonna have a little... Shelley's hosting a little event for him on Thursday from 2:30 to 4:30 if you're available. Or if you happen to be near the rec center, anytime this week, feel free to stop by and send your wishes to Dale. But we're happy for him and wish him the best as he moves forward. That's what I have this evening.
Thanks, Ryan. Item eight is mayor's report. Just a few things we updated on. Counselor Smith and I, I don't know if anybody else attended or was going to attend the virtual training for the NLPD last week. I was sick, so I'm gonna hope you got some comments for that. Thank you for hosting that. We had some great feedback already from residents that did come by. And as a reminder for this council, that North Liberty is gonna be hosting the joint entities meeting right away when we get back after the holiday on Monday, January 9th. There'll be a few more emails about it, but we're gonna have that at the rec center down in the Jardine Center with everyone. And a couple of bigger things contingent here in the back with the fire department. They're not here for accolades, but they were part of a significant event that happened in our region back on Thursday, and I just wanted to publicly thank them, chief, your leadership and resources that were taken and lack of sleep specifically by a few of them that just happened to be sitting right behind you there tonight. So I wanted to thank you all for doing that, for our community and for our region. And then also, you all saw an email last week from Ryan in regards to Chief Enega and the time and effort that she has taken to get certified and be recognized through an FBI training program. And she's received what's called their trilogy award. And as Ryan said better than I'll be able to say, it took three week-long sessions to do this, and this really shows a commitment on Chief Enega's behalf for law enforcement, but for our city as well. So not many folks in our community will know the time and effort that our officers and specifically Chief Enega take to be trained, to do well here in our community. So if you see her, thank her for that. And then finally, what was noted in her report back to us is that four officers attended a screening of a film that I wasn't able to attend, but they were actually the audience for it and other elected officials called Walking While Black and Love Is The Answer. So I wanted to again acknowledge them as a department for taking the time to learn more about the community around them and to help build those bonds within our city. And finally, this is our last meeting of the year, and there's only three of you here, but I wanted to thank you all for the time that you have been putting into this. It's a group effort. Sometimes conversations are easy and mundane, and other times they're not. So I've said this to all of you individually, but I appreciate the time that you put in here to make these meetings meaningful for our community and also for these folks here to my right as well. He's part of it. I'm sorry, Eric, you're here. You're four, all five. So with that, I will turn it over to you guys if you have some reports to offer to us.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. The virtual reality training of PD was fantastic. Glad that I got the opportunity to see what the investment has yielded.
There's been a lot of interest outside of our agency regionally in the software. And so I know that they're kind of working through and having other agencies come and take a look at it. Those of us that were there got a tour of the system, what it is, what it costs. And the cost of the program was covered by drug forfeiture money, so there were no tax dollars used for that, which is even better. But I think that it will yield... it gives us that are not in law enforcement, an opportunity to step into a virtual reality and face just a very small taste of what our officers get on a daily basis. And everything from, you know, talking to somebody on a bad day and trying to help them out to things that are much worse. And so it was... had fun, but learned a lot. And I think that that will be a tool that can be used, not just training our officers, but also what chief is using it for here is training our citizens and getting us to understand what they face on a daily basis. So it was really good. I really appreciate it, so.
Thanks for going. Ashley, Brian?
Just to go along, talk about the PD a little bit. I just looked at the chief's report. So just in the last month, they, you know, they had between the officers, there was 305 hours of training. So I mean, the amount of education they have to stay up on is pretty impressive. And I suspect that the fire department has a similar commitment to education and, you know, and always learning about new things. I did get to go to the craft fair over the last weekend, got me some cookies for the library, and then got some stuff from the vendors. There was quite a few people there. It was pretty impressive. And then, you know, Santa was there, but it was too big a line, so I didn't do that. And I did go to the emergency management meeting last. They're talking about the preliminary budget, which we'll work on in January. Everything is pretty flat, but except for the insurance really went up. It was actually the vehicle insurance, because a lot of the stuff is insured under that. And so that was kind of the biggest thing. And then just have ongoing supply problems. I think we're waiting on a brush truck. They're waiting on replacement for the pickup to haul the stuff around, and they've been delayed three or four times now. They're not even sure when it's gonna come up.
I would say thanks to Dave and his staff as well with the Marengo response. They've helped us in the last couple of days in Cedar Rapids and assisting us in trying to recoup some of the costs. So appreciate his work there.
Ashley, anything else?
No.
Alright, thank you, guys. Thank you for your time outside of these council meetings. Item 10 is our discussion now on the fire station. And I wanted to give everybody a little bit of a format of what we're gonna do here. Mostly, and most importantly, this council is not here to take any action tonight. We really value that input from a couple of months ago that we were able to get from the neighbors there. And you'll see your fingerprints in this document so far and this memo and what we're trying to do to support our fire department out there. So there won't be any discussion or any action here taken tonight. We wanted to provide an opportunity for staff to bring an update. Many of you would have received the memo directly, also seen in our council packet. Give this council an opportunity to ask questions of them. Eric, who's online here with us tonight, had a number of them, so I'm sure he'll have some questions. And then I want to turn it over to you all in the public for additional questions, if you have some, because our staff is here and our department, fire department is right there with you. So we think we've got the best resources here in the room because of those guys back there in the corner. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan to get us started here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, you've seen the memo in the packet. I certainly am not gonna read that back to you, but I do have a few thoughts that I'd like to share. And then I've asked the chief to speak a little bit, too. So I thought I'd start tonight by offering just a little bit of history on the second station. In 2007, the city completed a comprehensive facility study. You may have heard us reference this study when we were talking about the City Hall project. But that study identified 13 facility improvement projects or construction projects to be completed or at least reevaluated in an approximate 15-year time period. One of those projects, in fact, is this one, and it's the only one at this point that has not been started. And if you fast forward to 2016, the city hired a longtime fire executive and consultant, Donald Cox, to help identify the department's strengths and weaknesses. And he also helped us evaluate and prioritize the needs of the department. Mr. Cox's report, which some of you, I believe, have seen, contained many suggestions, including hiring our first full-time chief and starting to plan for that second station. In 2017, then, we did hire a full-time chief. We hired Chief Plots with 25 years of fire service in Iowa City. And one of his first tasks was to facilitate the development of that strategic plan. In this document, a second fire station was discussed again and prioritized. And then in fiscal year of 2021, the city council allocated funding for the purchase of a second station. And by allocate, I mean set money aside that year to be able to purchase land when the opportunity arose. And in that time, staff has had a host of conversation with property owners, as we tried to describe in the memo that's in your packet. I'll note that we took identifying a site very seriously, knowing that this decision would impact emergency response in North Liberty for decades. We strive to balance the greater good of the entire community with the impacts on a neighborhood. As our team had these discussions and further evaluated best practices of fire station sitting, we narrowed in on a property we felt that would be best suited for the city's next station. We presented a specific property then, as you all know, to this group earlier this year. Now hindsight being what it is, we should have engaged with the neighborhood before we presented to the city council on that specific parcel. So for that missed opportunity, I want to apologize to the neighborhood for that. We did have a meeting then subsequently with the neighborhood in October and heard their concerns. And from that meeting, we developed that aforementioned memo to elaborate on costs and drive times, utility challenges, and why some sites work better than others. And while our team still believes, at least from a fire service best practice perspective, that the preferred option one would be the ideal location, preferred option two, which is approximately 300 feet west of site one, would certainly be a practical compromise. Site two, as we've noted in the memo, may have some challenges with utilities. We won't know the full extent of that really, or we wouldn't know the full extent of that until we got further into a design process. However, we believe that they wouldn't be insurmountable. Further with site two, the fire station would be approximately 900 feet from the closest existing home while still having that Centennial Park frontage that we talked about, that we felt was important, and having direct access to St. Andrews Drive. So with that, I'll ask Chief Plots to come up and say a few things, and then Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you.
Sounds good.
City Council, city staff, thanks for the opportunity to address this. This has definitely been a lot of work to get from those planning processes to where we are today. And as indicated by the city manager, you know, the fire department did embark on a holistic strategic planning process back in 2018. The process identified several items that brings us here. First, because the process was community-driven, one of the things that we heard loud and clear from our community was, and what mattered to them most, was a very quick response with knowledgeable firefighters at their front door. So, you know, from a deployment perspective, that's something we've worked on for a long time. Second, an internal working group identified an objective to conduct the needs analysis of additional response facilities, which basically corroborated the report that was provided to the city by Mr. Cox back in 2016. I think all of us here can agree that facility planning, especially when it comes to emergency response, needs to be a proactive exercise before properties get developed and we run out of opportunities. During our initial steps a few years ago, after these planning processes took place, we discussed options with various landowners on the west side of the city. We considered several sites, which are detailed in the circulated memo that all of you have received. These conversations were largely just that, conversations, as many of them were very expensive to purchase or very expensive to develop. And many of them didn't offer the deployment location we were seeking. So we looked to specific resources to point us in that right direction. Where do we land? Where do we sit a second fire station? The National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, which is a professional standard, and it's a standard-based organization that has its fingers in all of the fire service, but part of it directs us to use a four-minute travel time analysis, which we've done with the help of shy of hattery engineering. We looked to the Insurance Service Office, or ISO, the organization that sets our community fire protection rating and their direction to locate an engine company within 1.5 miles of every property within the city limits. We did this as well internally with map tools. In addition to all this, within the fire department, we divided up the community in different risk management zones. And we've been trending that data for the last three-plus years and watching our call volumes increasing in these areas of town. Lastly, we considered the location of city borders, existing roadway structures or infrastructure, development trends, and our ability to back up a current fire station with the location on the west side. Looking purely at this from a deployment perspective, all the tools that I just spoke about are telling our team that the two options presented to you tonight are locations that will serve this community for decades to come. Locating a second facility is not just for the west side of town. It's for the greater good of the entire community, augmenting the total response system for our community. As the city manager indicated, I've had the opportunity to spend the last 10 years of my career analyzing, researching, and trying to improve response times. At one time, for the Iowa City Fire Department, and five years ago, and now for the North Liberty Fire Department. In the end, I feel this is one of the most important aspects of providing our service. We need to get there quick. Every second counts, and if delayed, nothing we can do on arrival can reverse the damage caused by a cardiac arrest or a working fire. It's done. We are constantly trying to beat the clock. Fires have the potential to double every minute if left unsuppressed. Any delays to a working fire will undoubtedly result in a much more hazardous environment for not only the citizens we protect, but the firefighters that are responding to those citizens. It's important to remember, though, we don't just respond to fires. Over 60% of our calls for service are medical emergencies. An important fact to remember is that brain death occurs within four to six minutes once the heart stops beating. This can be the result of grandpa experiencing a heart attack, cardiac arrest, child choking, adolescent suffering from allergic reaction. While fires might not occur weekly, these events do, every week. These are the kinds of incidents we go to all the time. This is why facility and resource positioning are so important. We only get one shot at this. We need to get it right for the entire community. This is an opportunity to do the most good for the most people for years to come. With that, I do appreciate your consideration. Thanks for letting me be in front of you tonight, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Awesome. I know that Eric had a number of questions he had asked in advance since he's on the phone, feeling well. Eric, I'm gonna start with you. Do you have any questions that you needed some more context on?
I don't think I need more context, but I may ask the same questions again because I don't know that everyone has the answers that we got, so... or at least some of them.
Yeah, fair enough.
I think at base level, if we were not concerned about deployment and response times, I think we would be happy to move this thing over on the other side of I-380 in the industrial park, right? Is that kind of fair to say, chief?
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, this... for me, this is all about deployment. This is all about covering the city the best way we can, looking at, you know, the two, you know, best practice tools that are available to us, both the NFPA and how ISO looks at a community. So yeah, if it weren't for deployment and if it weren't... if we had the ability to schedule our emergencies, it doesn't matter where the station goes. But for the most part, we have to look at our boundaries, I feel. We have to place the facility in a location with the existing road structure, roadway infrastructure in order to get to all those like locations, as well as then back up the current fire station. So it's a difficult balance. There's just a lot to take into consideration when we look to identify a site. And I think we've tried to do that with the best of our ability.
Eric, are there other questions that you...
And I think if...
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was just gonna ask, I'm assuming that you have not... nobody or maybe some people have seen the additional email that we received tonight, but I'm not gonna put you on the spot, chief, and ask you to respond to it at this point. But I think that's something that Robert Todd, I think is the name on the email, had some questions that I think I would... I mean, I think at some point, I would like to have a response to. I guess one thing that I was surprised by when I was looking at this is how small the four-minute response time seems to be for the current fire station. And my understanding is that's because the railroad is running through there. Is that right?
Absolutely. It's certainly a roadblock if there's a train sitting there. So that's how we look at it.
When you... yeah, so you're looking at this as if there is always a train sitting there?
Yeah, it's just, we just have to. It's no different than calculating response times, right? I mean, we look at the 90th percentile, not the average, just because of those outliers, because of trying to take everything into account. But I think largely, if you were to remove the railroad tracks, there still is a considerable gap on the southwest portion of town. And, you know, the boundaries being what they are for the community, you know, even if you were to take that railway out of the equation, I still think, all things being what they are, the two options that we've identified are still really, really appropriate.
Eric, I'm gonna let you keep going here, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm just gonna let you keep going.
Okay, alright. One thing I had a question about, and I'm not sure it was really well-stated in the memo that was sent out, is the noise issue. And number one, why are we concerned about noise at the preserve in the Tonight property to the west and not so much to the Harvest Estates to the east? Is that something you could address?
I think that had to do with the projection of the fire trucks leaving the fire station. Because if we were to move the fire station all the way down to where the school is at, then as the trucks leave the station, they project right into the neighborhood across the street. Whereas the locations we've provided as options, they're facing the park, and it's not somebody's living room across the street from the fire station. So I think that's the question you're asking. Is that correct, Eric? Does that sound right?
Yeah, so I think the... it seems like the projection of the siren itself is to the front of the vehicle. Is that...
Correct.
That's the issue?
Correct.
And then I guess, and I know we've been provided examples of other fire stations in residential areas, and I appreciate that. I wonder, and this is maybe more a question for other staff, are there... I mean, under current generally accepted planning standards, is placing a fire station an acceptable... an acceptable thing to do?
Yes, so it's not uncommon for a fire station to be adjacent to residential properties and citing for a fire station is... and parks, I would say, are you're looking for gaps in services, and that's what drives the location. And then, once you do that, it's not like a retail business where you're relying on a high amount of traffic driving, a whole bunch of cars driving down the street. It's... you're looking for a gap in service, which we've identified. And if you're adjacent to residential, you're looking to, what can you do with things to mitigate potential negative impacts to that? I would add that with respect to the location and not facing other houses, you know, that you look to push the fire station to the front property line as far as you can, so you can still have a truck park out in front, but you don't have the benefit of backing it up 200 feet because you'd have a lot of pavement in there. If you have a residential property to the east, north, or west, you're able to add landscape buffers. And our current proposal shows a minimum of a 20-foot landscape buffer around the sides, and you don't get that benefit from the front.
And I think my last one is probably just back to you, chief. Let's see. I guess, how often are you leaving the sirens going?
That's a great question, actually. According to 2021 data, 42% of our calls were non-emergent. So out of the 1,600-plus calls, you're talking just shy of 700 calls that we left the station without lights and sirens on. So, you know, we do go out quite a bit without lights and sirens. And I will say, we do our best to be good neighbors. We, especially overnight time hours, if there's no traffic, there's no reason to run the siren. So we do our best with regard to that. In a lot of cases, you know, we have guidelines in place that, you know, due to liability concerns and things like that, you know, we direct our folks, when you are running emergent, you do need to have lights and sirens on. However, from a practical sense, we do our best to be as least intrusive as possible. I'll leave it at that.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Eric. Ashley?
Quick question. Have there been any components or items that we could invest in that could deploy, that we could deploy to mitigate some of the sound pollution, you know, that would either attach to the truck or be something that we could add architecturally to the site itself?
As far as like from a siren perspective?
Yeah, or, you know, just to, so to speak, dampen... Yeah, or, you know, just to, so to speak, dampen the amount of noise.
Direct it maybe a little bit more.
I think this is kind of a two-part question. I'm thinking, you know, with regards to the truck itself and then as a whole.
Sure. That's an interesting question, because I think the fire service, emergency services as a whole, has tried to make the trucks a little bit more visible or so people are aware, right? We we try hard every year to continually reduce the amount of traffic accidents that we're in, right? We lose so many firefighters a year due to responses. And so I I think the fire service has actually gone the other way with that. Sirens are there for a reason, right? It's to notify people that we're coming and to stay off or to to pull over. So to answer that part of it, there hasn't been, and I don't know of any. You know, I I know there are some some technologies out there that I think there's one particular product that's called the Rumbler where it works with sound frequencies, and you can almost feel it just as much as you can hear it. I don't I've not been around that much, so I don't know if that would help in this regard. I don't know that it would. But largely, I think, when it comes to the reason for the siren being on, it's because we want we want people to know we're coming. So to answer your question, it's no. Yeah, I've not heard of anything. And then, as far as like the site itself, with regard to, I think, just general noise and and that kind of thing, your question's specific to noise, Ashley, is that correct? When I was with the Iowa City Fire Department, we took great, great steps to really try to reduce the the sound footprint of the fire department. For instance, when we would check saws weekly, we would do it times of the day where people people are okay with it. For instance, Station One in Iowa City was back back in the day, was next to a church, right? And so we didn't run the saws on Sunday mornings. It was just trying to be good neighbors. So with regard to that, I I think the design of the station can be such that, you know, we could put the administrative part of the building closer to the residential neighborhood and the apparatus bay on the other side. You know, this station will have a drive-through truck bay, so we aren't backing up all the time like we are at the current station, so backup alarms will be fairly nonexistent. So there I think there are things we can do in order to lessen that footprint, if you would. We just have to put our minds to it and and do whatever the the site allows us to do.
Fire away.
Chief, I would say with data as well, so to the to the noise aspect, when you're looking at response matrix, you've done accreditation stuff for a long time. Your response matrices can be so so that you minimize the number of units that roll on certain calls. So if it's a dumpster fire, it's one that goes routine, depending if it's next to a structure, or it is everything running hot because somebody's house is burning down. And so along with the the noise, the noise issue, I I think the chief has some some tools available to him to to help reduce that. I don't know of a a bigger area to blast a siren across than Centennial Park that we currently have available, to be honest with you, outside of the blowing directly into the the neighborhood. And then, Chief, the the overlapping circles mean a lot, and the overlapping circles matter. It is for ISO credit, so all of us who pay insurance and homeowners' insurance and business insurance, it would be really silly for the city to build a fire station on the west side of the interstate and not hit any response times on the east, because we would get no ISO credit. It would not positively affect the insurance rates at all, aside from the fact that they would not get to you in a timely fashion when your child is choking or your house is on fire. So those overlapping circles that we see in the in what the chief has provided matter. And so, Chief, this specific location allows you to do what with the overlap for ISO credit and for response times?
Yeah, as far as response times go, I I think the thing that we need to continually remind ourselves of is this isn't just a single fire station, right? I mean, because our current fire station needs backup. Twenty-eight percent of the time last year, when we had a call, we had a second call. And so this station will then cover those calls, depending on which district, you know, if two calls are in that district, this station has to then cover that call and has to respond beyond its 1.5-mile radius. So the further away we take it from that overlap that you speak of, you know, the more difficult it is to back up that station and vice versa, right? Because Station One will cover this station when they go out on a call if a subsequent call comes in. So those overlapping circles are important. If we if we stretch things out too far, now we've got to worry about, you take one fire station out of the equation, now we're definitely not going to be even close. We're going to be right back where we were with response times. So it's a system. It's truly they work together. And, you know, I'd be I'd be silly to to try to equate just how the insurance premiums would be affected by where we place a fire station, by just moving it this block or that block. You know, so many different insurance companies use that rate differently. So it's very difficult. But one can one thing can you can be sure of is that if you if you place a station and there are large gaps within the community that don't meet that 1.5 mile, that insurance rate is not going to go down. And so that rate affects everybody in the community. It's not the people that are in the gap. It's the entire community will get that rate. So I think we have to be diligent in making sure we don't lose sight of the fact that we have to try to cover as much as we can with that 1.5-mile radius to lessen the amount of gaps that we have with with within the city. And, you know, it's interesting, because as you start looking at this, the location of this particular station, with the West Side Station, as as the city continues to grow, it's already pointing us towards where Station Three should start to look. So, again, we've looked at a lot of different communities that have recently built fire stations, and their approach is exactly the way our approach is. We're looking at 1.5 miles, we're looking at four-minute travel times. And the city of Marion, for instance, they just built Station Three. And if you plot their their fire stations on a map, their circles intersect exactly like our circle does. So it is a very common practice. It is a best practice, and we feel it it's been a good approach.
So just looking at the diagrams, the red area is the four-minute travel time for station, current station.
Okay.
Right?
I think I don't my copy isn't colored.
That's correct.
Brian, sorry.
I did a black and white copy. For the other station.
Okay.
Adding that in. Now, at some point, would they intersect? Did they get purple on the map or just kind of?
So there really wasn't, there really.
With with the railroad tracks, there was.
Yeah, there's only a small amount of of overlap. It's it's very, very close with with respect to the four-minute drive time. There's only like, I'm looking at maybe two or three areas.
So like, the red area is the same in all the diagrams?
Yes.
Okay, then the purple there varies based on what things.
Correct.
Okay, and then the circles are the 1.5 miles?
Yes.
So what we really want is the circles to intersect mostly in North Liberty and not into the county.
Yes.
Now, we covered, you know, the township and stuff, but there's much less things out there.
That's a great point.
Stuff. Several of the, I think, almost all of the other ones, other than the option A and B preferred sites, actually leave my house like on the edge.
Mine, too.
So I would like, you know, closer is is good for me and stuff. So and then in response time, that's response time from heading out the door.
Yes, the four-minute is travel time.
Right, and stuff. And you guys are doing a pretty good job of getting out within a couple of minutes of everything.
Yep, and we will always that'll always be something we work on is turnout time, getting out the door fast.
And then this would also, the trucks would all also be able to attach to the ventilation system like they do now, so that killing diesel fumes would, other than they were outside, and most of the time you're not running trucks outside for various things because it's hot outside. And then I just I know that people were concerned about the noise. So I I noticed that you are driving past my house much more than you soon now that the road is paved, but, you know, going out to the interstate. And I think that's going to be a continued problem as that gets more and more traffic. When I grew up, I grew up about a block from the fire station and a block from the police department and the first and the sheriff's department. Lot of sirens. So it wasn't, it, you know, wasn't that big a deal, because, you know, when they're going by, they're not sticking in front of your house going by, they're going. So so I I know I can understand that it'll be a little bit of a problem, but I think with with less, you know, trying to work on that and trying to maybe not hitting the sirens till you're out and going in the other direction, things could be done for that.
Absolutely.
But the stuff on, the two sites on St. Andrews looks like the only place that we can really do that. That would be somewhere there would be that would be my preference.
Anything else? You guys? Okay. Right. The comments that I have, I'm going to kind of reserve most of it. I get the benefit of bending the cheers, the chief's ear and Ryan's ear quite a bit over the last several months and the last couple of years on this as well. So this, I I do want to open this up now for questions or comments from the audience. Doctor Todd, we got your email, and also I think all of your questions may have been addressed by chief plots up here, but please ask them again if it didn't or you need clarification. I do want to treat this time as we would treat normal public comment time with a little bit of leeway, obviously, there are only a handful of us here tonight. If you have a question we haven't answered yet, chief hasn't answered, please ask. If it's been asked and it's been answered, you know, that's that's as best as we can do here as a group, so just help us by not asking it again. And just try to remember that we're trying to solve a problem, not trying to fix people in this process. So we are invaluable, your service or your time here tonight and input so far has been valuable to us. So with that, please let us know what questions you have yet that you would like to see addressed. Please do.
Hi, everybody. Robert Todd again. Thanks for reading my email, by the way. That's really comforting that that actually happens. All right. I'm going to say right off that I don't want the fire station on St. Andrews, at least in the preferred two places. And Chief, if I can just say, your tenderness towards the neighbor, I really appreciate, and I'm sure you guys are all wonderful, but I still don't want you as my neighbors. And that's nothing personal. I hope you can all appreciate that. I also want to say thank you for helping educate me. I want to, in some ways, just talk about the email I sent, since there's some people in the room who obviously didn't get it, and to say that part of your comments, Chief, helped educate me on on the document, but I will refer to the document, which I found to be a little disappointing, inasmuch as I perhaps perhaps it's a communication thing, perhaps it's that I am just learning about some of these issues, and I'm certainly not an expert, as the chief would be. If you read the document, it looks pretty natural to understand. If you compare the document with the calculations a layperson can do, it is not natural. I understand now if the chief is telling us that the rail line is really the impediment to the four-minute transition across town. I can sort of understand that point being addressed in my email, but if you read it as an everyday person, you will never understand that, and I find that to be a very disappointing document in that regard. My other understanding is that the ISO travel times are about road miles. When I found the ISO schedule, it is not about circles with radii, and in fact, as the crow flies, is the wrong way to do it. I have found a couple of different blogs of city engineers and fire station planners who say you can't do that anymore. Maybe I am mistaken, but I will count on you guys to take these questions in 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 further discussion since I cannot. You know, I don't think that Chief and the mayor and I are going to sit down and hash this out, so this is my opportunity to focus you again on these issues. Second, and I will say this again, as a communication issue only with regards to the document, and perhaps, again, the chief cleared some of this up, but to read in the document that future residents may be inconvenienced while current residents are ignored, I found quite infuriating. Now that I have perhaps a a partial explanation to that, to say that there are other issues that are not addressed in writing in the memo, such as where the sirens are facing, these are not things that every person knows, but I would ask you guys to follow up in more detail on these issues and to not assume that the computations that are there are correct, because I, in spite of, I I can't say that they're wrong or right, Chief, you are the expert, but as presented in the document, they don't make sense to me. And I would also, you know, like to add that without these sort of further discussions about how the noise travels, where it's coming from, it just looks like you're favoring developers over actual residents, and that I found very troubling. I'm not saying that that's how you guys intended it. I don't think that that is your motivation, but to me, as a resident, that is exactly how I read. So maybe like, again, I want to focus on the the memo and the writing. I just I found it very frustrating. So these are some of the main questions that I have. I certainly don't know where to put the fire station. I I don't I don't know how to answer that, and I do not envy you all in having to make that decision, so let me thank you for taking this on for so, especially for the councilors for so little pay. I appreciate your work, okay? But at the same time, I want you to understand that there is a large group of us who are very unhappy with the idea, and I and I will emphasize this in particular, especially with preferred location one. Situating this fire station directly adjacent to people's properties, I find to be contrary to the basic structure of the North Liberty document, which says, we will protect property values. It's in your charter, if I remember right, and so I would like you to consider that. I I can't say for my neighbors who are directly adjacent to one, how they feel about preferred location two. I still think it's the wrong position. I can't say, but I don't exactly know how to say it, but the document I found to be very unconvincing. I have a lot of questions, and I'm going to count on you guys to help answer them. And in particular, to Counselor Seteg, who's who's remote, apparently, and you referenced it, I really appreciate you taking the time to read it on such short notice. And I do appreciate your time taking, you guys all take to put it together, and whoever was in charge of it, I really appreciate the time you took. Please don't take my criticisms as, you know, sort of personal, and I'm not, this is not personal, you know, I'm a professor, I grade people all the time. I just read the document, and I thought, this doesn't make sense to me. And I will count on you guys to try and do a little better job in either communicating or making a different decision about where the fire station would go. But again, do not take it lightly. The residents do not want it, and they'll be really angry long term if you put it there. Thank you.
Scott.
From here, mail later. Memorandum dated.
December 6?
Fifth.
Maybe, perhaps. I think I got my email on it. Yeah, that's the one.
Who else? Other questions or comments for us all who are here tonight? Mr. Cameron, I think the stage is yours. You're welcome.
Had a prepared remarks here. I'm going to amend that a little bit. I was dismayed. Well, first, a little background. The chief and Brian, we met probably, what, two years ago, August. I didn't write the date down. I went back to my medical file because you in your elegant thank you letter for my time, you did have mentioned there. Lastly, I hope your eye or your skin procedure near your eyes go well. So far, it has. Thank you for that excellent. So this whole procedure of citing the station could have gone a lot better had the three of us proceeded, but there was intervention. And so, you know, as far as the meeting on, well, it was. I made comments in the public hearing, 26 July, that probably. that probably negated my invitation to the Good Neighbor Meeting that occurred October 17th. True or not?
Sorry, I didn't hear, could, would you repeat the question, please?
I'll answer it, no, that's not true, that we hosted that neighborhood meeting for the residents, the neighborhoods, the neighbors who live there.
Okay. But, by the same token, Good Neighbor Meetings were always performed for those with a 200-foot impact zone, and as in this case, I'd have a 50% perimeter site order.
Yeah, this, by code, this was not a Good Neighbor Meeting. This was, we just hosted a neighborhood meeting for those who expressed concern at a previous council meeting.
Okay. Just dicing the words.
Sure.
All right. For those that, I don't know how many are on TV watching this or not, but I am Harold Cameron. Was introduced as the farmer at that Good Neighbor Meeting, or whatever you term it. Contrary to staff at that meeting, they depicted having a good relationship with me. Well, I don't think that was the case. It has deteriorated. You're shaking your head, why?
I don't remember having a conversation like that with anyone.
It's documented. I will not endorse either of these preferred sites, one or two. I'll only comment on the impacts that each will have. Former Harvest Estates residents, name her in particular here, Kristen Hunt. She was a resident there west of Perry Street. She had a son that was special needs, and in order to better serve his needs, moved back home to Parnell to build a new home that was totally handicapped. I talked to Kristen this past summer, roughly a year after her son Grayson had passed, and she relayed to me that she really missed the neighbors, that neighborhood, and the special bond she had for that neighborhood. That special bond to a neighborhood is what builds neighborhoods. Builds communities. From the ground up, not from the government infrastructure that is built to enhance. As previously stated, I have a 50% perimeter property line with that site number one. That leaves 250 feet, more or less, distance between Harvest Estates, if it was extended westward, to the north edge of the property line of the station. That presents a challenge for future development within that 250 feet of the type of development similar to that that exists in Harvest Estates. You'd have 250-foot deep lots. Site number two presents a 75% perimeter boundary line. It's out of sequence development, and would also present challenges for future development possibilities for surrounding land use served by infrastructure. With all these parameters set forth in the higher, higher memorandum dated 8 December, and the chief's Cedar Rapids Gazette write-up dated 30 November of this year, the 50-year vision, the mile-and-a-half coverage radius with overlap, the four-minute response time, the Centennial Park connection, place of refuge for public safety, gathering place for meetings and events, and the command post for emergencies, large and small, at park events. A site along St. Andrews would be logical. If that's the case, my question remains, why not build Station Two in the park? Cedar Rapids, number four, is built on Quint Pines Golf Course. In closing, Old Iowa City, number one. I'm a lot older than you are. I think I visited that when I was about five, six years old, okay? It's all special memories. Climbing the ladders, rolling the hose after it was pulled down from the tower to drain out, sitting behind the wheel of a pumper truck or a ladder. And above all, fondest memory is the fire pole, the engine floor below. That was community involvement. Not the token involvement that would be allowed today. Nobody would be allowed to put down a fire pole at six years old. Agreed? Well, I had the fortunate... Some things that was brought out by the last speaker in the memo. But going back to our first meeting near the site with the chief and city planner, there's one thing that struck out, and that was a map that was with the circles. And at that point, I thought, you know, the outline of the university hospitals and clinics. Perhaps that's a driver for meeting that day. It was outlined on the map. Would you, anybody care to expound on that? You don't recall it? You were right in there, somebody did, you were right, which? There's your letter, there's the map. And then, the response times, they were not up to date because that month hadn't finished. As the previous speaker noted in city council, or say, I don't know who, Ryan, I guess, administrator. You know, this process of sighting that station goes back quite a few years. And options as to where to cite that, a lot of those have been, you know, put by the wayside or eliminated because of noise concerns with development that has occurred within that timeframe. Like I say, I'm, looks like I'm the last Indian along St. Andrews. That's all I have to say. I'm just sorry that more people from Harvest Estates, as important issue as this is, hadn't turned out.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Does anybody else have questions or want to address staff or council?
I had a question. At the Good Neighbor Meeting, we had addressed the possibility of moving it even farther west towards the school, and has that, uh, location been completely dismissed, or if so, why?
It hasn't been, I don't think these folks had the benefit of the memo and maybe the scorecard that you had sent out to all of us today, but no, it, it hadn't been eliminated, but it was clearly talked about in there. And if I can... How to pull this up, that would be beneficial. There are two properties, basically, that are near the elementary school. One near, like literally next to it, and then another one just a little bit further east, but generally in the same area. Both of them meet or serve that one-and-a-half-mile radius, that's been discussed, and also the four-minute response time is adequate. And, and our staff and chief gave them best, good, or worst definitions for those two criteria. The two across from Centennial were both the best locations for both those criteria, and the, the one next to North Bend Elementary School and the one just a little bit further east both received good ratings in their opinions on there. Their cost to develop the one directly adjacent to North Bend Elementary School would be the same land acquisition cost as the two locations on Forever Green, and it would also have sewer available there right now on site. I think what's not mentioned in the memo is that those, either of those locations would be putting a siren into existing homes right now, if I'm not mistaken on that. So that's one criteria that wouldn't have been listed on here with that. So, Dr. Todd, to answer one of your questions is why, on future development, why think about them instead of current residents? We're actually thinking about the current residents in the preserve right now with both of those locations, because a fire station there would blow into those homes, which are already there as well. Did that help answer your question a little bit?
A little bit, but I thought that we were told, and I could be wrong on this at the Good Neighbor Meeting, when we brought up the noise of them leaving the station, I thought that we were told that a lot of times, they didn't activate the sirens directly as they were leaving, so it wouldn't be blowing into theirs. They might be a few yards down the road in either direction before they actually turn the sirens on, which would eliminate that problem altogether.
No, it doesn't eliminate it altogether, and if I can go back to the notes I was keeping here when the chief was talking in his memo, I believe it was 42% of the time a fire truck leaves the station silent, so that left 58% of the time it does leave the station, because it has to.
I was basing mine on what was said tonight, I was basing on what we were, I thought we were told earlier in our...
Gotcha, yeah, and I, I can see how that would have been part of that conversation. Yeah, so no, it does leave the station with the siren on sometimes, more than half the time, actually.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else have questions or comments for us? Okay. Chief, is there anything else that you had out there? Okay. Like I said, we don't have any action planned here for tonight. Council, did you have anything else?
I would just say, Mayor, the, the good doctor's comments are well-received. Appreciate the, the manner in which you did that, Doc, very, very professional. We don't take it personal, we're, we're all trying to solve a, a community problem, and that's what it's about. And the fact that you all are here, and Mr. Cameron especially, it, it matters. And we do appreciate the, the conversation. And you are correct, I, I believe that, you know, some of, some of the communication back and forth was not as, as clear as it could have been. Typically, when we talk in after actions of, of past actions of council or anything, communication's always the piece we come back to and we can always improve on. We certainly need to improve on that, and, and we're trying to do so. But to you, to your point on the option one backed up to the properties, I tend to agree with that, and I'll, I'll reiterate what Ryan said. We, we missed the mark there on the, on the initial communication before it came to council. So that is certainly a hard lesson that we've learned. I, I will say, the, the city, the city has done a much better job with Good Neighbor Meetings, with communicating. This one specifically, we, we, we draw, we drew a much larger radius after hearing from folks at the fire station that night. And Mr. Cameron, to your point of the lack of participation here tonight, I, I don't necessarily think that that's because those in Harvest Estates don't care or, or don't want to be here. They were at the fire station in, in good numbers the night that we met, and, and I certainly appreciated all of the conversation that, that they had. And it did push and cultivate a lot more discussion in staff. It cultivated a lot more looking at, at possibilities and reasons why other sites might not meet a certain criteria. So, I want those folks to know that we're there that evening, it, it did matter. And I, I know, I see some faces in the back that were there, so we do, we do certainly appreciate that. But, Doc, we, we do appreciate those things.
Thanks, Brian.
Do you understand, Brad? Being the owner of potential Site One and Two, or having not been notified that, whether we termed it Good Neighbor Meeting or whatever, discussed.
I understand.
All right. I will close this agenda item, and again, thank everybody for being here and for providing that input, asking those questions, and hearing us out, I guess, a little bit more in detail. So, we don't, we don't have a meeting yet, yes, the rest of this month, but I know that this will be a topic on future council meetings, and we'll keep you informed on those. I'm going to move on to item number 11, which is A&amp;M Zoning Amendment One, and this is our second consideration of ordinance number 2022-26, in ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from O R.P. Office and Research Park District to C3 Higher Intensity Commercial District. Could I have a motion for the second consideration, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, do you guys have any questions or comments?
So, I'm not particularly in favor of this at all, but I just want to make sure that, I will vote for it, just so that we don't have any dropouts or anything.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Tracy, can we have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12 then is A&amp;M Zoning Amendment Number Two, and this is also a second consideration of ordinance number 2022-27, in ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from Office and Research Park District to C3 Higher Intensity Commercial District. Could I have a motion for this consideration, please?
A move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on that one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 13 is our zoning code amendment, and this is also a second consideration of ordinance number 2022-29, in ordinance amending Chapter 168, and this is the zoning code development regulations in Chapter 169, which is the zoning code zoning district regulations of the North Liberty Code of Ordinance is by amending the use matrix and a use definition by amending off-street parking and loading setbacks and off-street parking requirements. Could I have a motion for this consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, do you guys have any questions on this one? Tracy, you have a roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. If I could ask the audience to take your conversations outside, I would appreciate that. We have live mics over the audience that can be picked up online. Thank you. Item 14 is our policy regarding payables for city council, for council meeting, and this is Resolution Number 2022-125, a resolution establishing the policy for the payment of claims due to the cancellation of the second city council meeting in December of 2022. Could I have a motion to open this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and Ryan, could you just give us a little context here?
Sure, this is a result of not meeting in the, for the second time in December, and there are certain bills that will have late fees associated with them, and we just are wanting to get those paid and cleaned up before the January 10th meeting.
Any questions for Ryan? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Call this item 15. Copy's a little jaded here, I'll keep up with it. This is, in regards to pet fees, this is... Uh, this is, uh, in regards to pet fees. This is item, uh, resolution number 2022-130. And this is a resolution establishing license fees and penalties for cats and dogs and dog park membership fees in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this agenda item?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions about this?
Just, I have one, just comment. Um, I know when, uh, you set the memo back about the question about, you know, the service animal, uh, emotional service animals and stuff. So, um, probably, we should probably go back and clean up that language somewhere along the line. Uh, most of the time, it's not a physician who's doing those. It's actually like a counselor or licensed therapist or something like that. So we should include that. And then the 5602, which has the blind, disabled, and I can't remember what the other one was. But probably we should have it specifically just say, people who require trained service animal. Because there's other, uh, uses now, uh, for service animals that are not, that above and beyond those considerations now.
Did you, uh, did you say 5602 of the?
It just where it says, uh, waiving the fee.
Oh, okay.
Blind, yep. Thing, but there's actually, when I looked it up, there's actually a whole slug of ADA requirements now.
Take a look at that.
Our practice, though, seems to be fine.
I, I think you're right, yes.
You okay moving this resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Motion carries. Item 16 is our FY 2022-23 Additional Budget Transfers. And item A is Resolution Number 2022-126. And this is a resolution approving additional transfers for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, for the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this item, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Uh, Ryan, uh, cleared that up for us in the memo also. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is the Preserve Part 2B, and this is, uh, two parts. A is Resolution Number 2022-127. This is a resolution approving the developer's agreement for the Preserve Part 2B, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 2022-114. And this is a resolution approving the final plat, accepting improvements and terminating temporary drainage easement for the Preserve Part 2B. Could I have a motion for this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is our West Penn Reconstruction Project. And, uh, item A then is Resolution Number 2022-128. A resolution approving the 28E Agreement between Johnson County and the City of North Liberty for the West Penn Street Project. Could I have a motion for this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved, seconded and thirded. Do you guys have any questions, uh, on that? Or Ryan, you want to paint a little bit of the?
I wouldn't mind if you're, you've got some momentum going here, but I, I'd just like to touch base on this a bit. Uh, this agreement is very similar to one we had with the county a few years ago on North Liberty Road. Uh, you might recall that half of that road was, uh, in the, in the county limits at the time. Here, similar, we actually approached the county about just looking at, uh, Penn Street up to, to James Avenue. And then it was their idea, uh, because they were having some issues with James Avenue to include that in the project. Uh, they just did not have the, the bandwidth to, to move it forward. So we said we'd take the lead on it and, uh, similar again to the North Liberty Road project. And you can see the cost split is, uh, uh, North Liberty will pay for 50% of the, of the road that abuts or is in the city limits and the county picks up the rest. So, uh, it's a fair agreement. They wanted a clause in there about if we annex, we would reimburse them for that. Again, similar to what we said on North Liberty Road, and, uh, we, uh, we think that's fine. Frankly, this area, uh, because of how it would be sewered, uh, is a long, long ways off from being annexed, most likely.
And if I may, uh, that, that annexation provision is consistent with other agreements that the county has with other communities, including Soulon recently. So that's, that's kind of standard operating procedure for them.
Thank you both for that. Do you have any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 will be our fringe area agreement, and this is, uh, Resolution Number 2022-129. A resolution approving the fringe area policy agreement between Johnson County and the city of North Liberty. Could I have a motion to open this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you guys want to add anything to this?
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, so what does this, um, what does this do? What does this allow on the city side and the county side when we look at either voluntary or forced annexation in the future?
Uh, so the existing, um, fringe area agreement that we've had since 2014 prohibits the city from using involuntary annexation without approval from the county. This, uh, has no such restriction in it. Um, this is, this, uh, it is extremely unlikely that we are, that we'll be moving towards, uh, involuntary annexation anyway. Uh, we, almost every annexation that I'm aware of that we've done, uh, has, has been technically voluntary. So, um, this is, um, with that, with that exception, um, very consistent with what we have right now. The purpose of this amendment is to facilitate a new map. Um, we, we have an existing map that shows different service areas. And we ident, staff identified, uh, through a, um, county resident that wants to develop that they live in an area that we will not ever be able to provide sewer service for. Uh, but they were going to be required to build their subdivision up to city standards, including sewer, that they would never receive. Uh, and that was, that's sort of a nonsensical up, but we not want to be, um, needlessly, uh, onerous to our, to our neighbors in the, in the county, even if they eventually would come into town. Uh, and so in order to prevent them, uh, a cost for no benefit, uh, we wanted to be able to amend the map. The only way to amend the map was to amend the agreement. The agreement has been amended minimally. Uh, so as to allow for that map change, change to happen, uh, to accommodate a couple ordinance changes that have happened on the county side in the interim since 2014, uh, and to kick the can down the road no more than five years. So with the, the previous agreement was 10, and we're, we're, we're having a shorter window to revisit this on a bigger scale with, uh, with a broader brush when we have, when both us, uh, the county, uh, and both planning teams have the bandwidth available to take a, a big bite over, over what that looks like. So, um, this is just a, a Band-Aid. It's, it's, uh, it's a useful one. But it doesn't, it doesn't have, I don't think, uh, you're, you're not going to see any policy changes coming from this, uh, that are, that are meaningful. I, I do recommend approval.
Thanks, Grant. Great question. Any other, any others? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. And our last agenda item, item number 20, is the Assessment Resolution, and this is Resolution Number 2022-131. A resolution assessing the delinquent amount owed to the city of North Liberty, Iowa to individual property taxes. Could I have a motion for this, please?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions on that one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Old business. Anything that we haven't talked about in a while that you want to return? I'm going to wait till Brent's done clearing his mind. Good?
Uh, I would just point, um, that you brought it up, Mayor. I would just point that, uh, there's continued discussion on the renaming of the field, uh, and I would like to see that. Uh, and there'll be more conversation after first of the year. So a lot of email responses, the most I've ever seen in my time on council. Uh, and, uh, just look forward to, uh, additional conversations with councilors on that issue.
As do I. And to put a finer point on that, I think the staff has a goal of, um, March or so to get some good guidelines in place or have.
Yeah, I think sooner, sooner than that, but I thought we'd, that you and I'd chat about it, but I, yeah, sometime after the first of the year. Of course, that's a given now since we don't have another meeting.
Yep. Thanks for bringing that back up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? All right. Any new business for us?
Just one quick thing, sad news. Uh, the University of Iowa, a former president, Dr. Boyd, passed away. So just like to extend our sympathies to his family and the university community. I've met him several times. He's cool, Greg.
Thanks for letting us know that, Brian. Any other new business?
Just a reminder, in these holiday seasons, uh, as many of us, um, are fortunate to be able to spend time with family, uh, friends and, um, have nice things and nice meals, there, um, not everyone is able to. And so please, uh, please use the true meaning of the season and reach out to those, uh, that may not have as much as you. Make sure that your neighbors are well and, um,
Bless you.
If you're looking for, uh, ways to outreach, uh, and get back to the community, uh, reach out to City Hall. We can point you in a number of directions, but take care of one another.
Thanks for that reminder. All right. Then a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Be well, Eric. Thanks for calling in, man.